All right, let's call to order the Board of Supervisors work session for Tuesday, September 30th. We're meeting in Supervisor Hearing Room on Melody Lane in Bisbee. Order deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. Any item listed is open for discussion. Please note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, meaning presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from those attached versions online. Members of the Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or via remote conferencing. Members of the public may also attend the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with roll call. District one.
Crosby.
District two.
Gomez.
District two. Gomez is here. And District three, Antonor is here. All supervisors are present and in person. Today, we're here to discuss the possible direction regarding the county's vaccination policy, and I will defer to Mr. Crosby to open this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And all I had to do is barely crack open this finder from my, from my two binder set of Health Department finders, to find things about state COVID, controlled spread of COVID, underserved people, the subject of underserved people with regard to the Health Department, complying with future or existing or future directives of guidance regarding anything having to do with a pandemic, vaccines and so on, the subject of contact tracing, just many, many things that we heard of while we were under the COVID pall, or whatever you want to call it. And so how do we know what to believe? How do we know what to believe when it seems like, if you look at the advertisements on TV, it kind of seems like pharma's taking over the world. If they can't convince you that they need, you need some kind of medicine, then you know, you're not watching them on TV because eventually they're going to probably talk you into it. So then we have a so-called vaccine-induced AIDS, which is something that, that people can acquire by having a whole bunch of vaccines. So we need to know about what can we do about learning who to trust and who not to trust? What is a, what's a good, good vaccine? What's terrible vaccine for us? Because we don't want to impose terrible vaccines on anybody accidentally, that's for sure. Another thing that comes up is the issue of cloned aborted fetal cells in any vaccine would be something that I would be against, and not everybody might feel the same way as I do, but there's something that's called the Nuremberg codes, which says you can't experiment on people without their permission. So we don't want to violate any of that kind of stuff. And that about sums it up. And I have recruited a friend that was an Army doctor, and his name is Sam Sigaloff. And because he risked his career over what he believed about the vaccines, I think that has met the criteria, in my opinion, of being somebody that we could trust and has worthwhile opinion on vaccines. And I would like to hear from him if he's available.
You mean like now?
Yeah.
Is he online?
He did arrange for him.
Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know we had a guest. Hang on one second. So what you're asking, what you're asking for today is to develop?
Precisely.
A county vaccine policy? We do not have one currently?
We do, as far as what vaccines we carry and implementation, but it's not a mandate. People have freedom of choice to incur a vaccine or not.
And it's a county, which you're referring to is for the general public, not, and I don't, I guess I'm needing clarification if you're looking for county policy for employees or county policy that applies to?
Well, I think, I feel assured that whatever, whatever vaccine policy there is for employees is going to be completely voluntary. So what I'm talking about, and actually, any vaccine is completely voluntary, whether you go to the county or not, because you can get everything that there is out on the free market of medicine.
Right. That is correct. We carry that same belief.
Any other questions?
No, no. So, so, so you're, you want to expand on, you want to, you want to cover voluntary only, right? You want to have a list of categories of vaccine? That what? We would, we would allow or prevent?
Probably prevent.
Prevent?
Prevent us providing the vaccine?
Yes.
But they could get it out.
So prevent the county from providing?
The county health department from providing it.
Okay. What, so voluntary policy for voluntary vaccines only, a list, or category of vaccines that we prevent the county from providing, or mandating, or directing, or whatever. All right, what else?
Uh, contact tracing is another issue that I don't think the county or the government should get into. So when you, there's, there's certainly, I gotta go back on my Army experience now. Korea, there was an issue with, you know, venereal diseases over there, and contact tracing was a very effective tool to trace back to the, let's just say, origin nadir of the various problem that resulted in several people getting sick from, or whatever. So it is a viable tool to limit and stop the spread of disease. So I'm not against contact tracing, because it, or, or, let's just say, we have a, somebody comes into a hospital that's gotten a real severe food illness. First thing you ask them is, what's the last 72 hours? What restaurants, or where have you been, or whatever, you know? So that's a form of contact tracing too. So I don't know if you want to go down that road that far. I mean, and then? Well, we can talk about it.
Well, I mean, I mean, for me, I remember when I got COVID, it was actually funny. Cochise County called me. When I got COVID, I was, I think Cochise County COVID case number 82, or something like that. I was one of the first guys. The first thing they asked me is where I had been for the last five days, right? And the answer for that was easy. I was in the ICU at TMC. That's who gave me COVID, by the way. I got COVID while I was in the hospital. So that was interesting, because that told them that I was given the virus from a medical facility, right? So which, as we may or may not like to admit, hospitals spread a lot of disease. I mean, that's just the reality. When you put people in close proximity to lots of diseases, sometimes they get spread. So contact tracing in that regard, who invited, what's that?
Who asked you?
It was somebody from the Health Department called me.
Did they say that you had to tell them?
No, no. I mean, she just, for some lady, she's very nice. She said, hey, you know, we got positive, because I tested positive at Benson Hospital, because this, this is, I went in there to get checked for pneumonia, because I had, I had, this is when I had my open heart surgery. And because I was under anesthesia for so long, my thoracic surgeon thought I might have pneumonia related to prolonged anesthesia. So he said, go into Benson Hospital, get a chest X-ray, check for pneumonia. So when I got the chest X-ray, they said, hey, we got some good news and bad news. Good news is you don't have pneumonia. The bad news is you have COVID. So?
Which we used to call flu, but now it's?
Right. So, so then I went back in the hospital, back into TMC, because this was like, two weeks after I had open heart surgery. So, but then I got the phone call a couple days afterwards. I was actually in the hospital, I think, when I got the phone call on my cell phone from Cochise County saying, hey, we've been alerted that you have COVID. Could you tell us who you've been around and whatnot for the last five days? I said, sure, I've been around the hospital staff of the Tucson Medical Center, you know, and that's where I've been for the last three weeks, right? So if I've got COVID, there's only one logical explanation for it. That's where I got it. I got it from the hospital. Somebody, and they actually, then the hospital, I forgot his name, it was a Hispanic doctor from the Pima County, it was the Pima County health guy for diseases, and Pima guy was actually a doctor. I can't remember his name. He came into my room, and he's dug deeper so that they could actually track it back to who the guy was that they suspect likely transmitted it to me within the hospital, how it got to me in the hospital. And that helps the hospital to not do that again, and get other people sick. So that's how contact tracing provides a benefit. Now, I mean, if there is a, an issue with that, I don't have an issue with that, but I'm trying to get what your, what your concern is with, with contact tracing?
Contact tracing certification from the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, and these people possess strong elicitation skills, and each is educated, smart, with strong elicitation skills and training. So what I said at the time was, so it's so important that this company talk about these strong elicitation skills, that they mention it twice. And I don't want my constituents to face these contract tracers with strong elicitation skills under the authority.
Well, I mean, it's, it's?
So we got an issue with rights?
So, no, no.
So what's expedient versus what is people's?
No, I mean, if someone doesn't want to talk to somebody, they have the right to say, I don't want to talk to somebody. I don't understand what the, what the point is though. So I mean, I, so I'm biased, because I got a pre-med degree, I got a minor in biology, I was a paramedic for 14 years, I also practiced medicine overseas without a license for?
But you didn't get the shot?
I didn't get the shot. I did not, I did not get, because I got the fresh off the boat from China version, and I got natural immunity, and I understood that, because again, back to my biology class, I learned that in biology about natural immunity, and my pre-med classes about that. So I understood that.
You trust the science?
I'm not going to say, no, I worked with, so don't forget, I had a medical background for years, like when I was in the military, and then I worked with some of the smartest men and women on the planet in the missile business, and that's all science. It's all polynomial equations and modeling and simulation and math. So yeah, science is, and everything, every decision we made was based on science in that world, right? So I do trust science. I mean, the other, the problem I don't trust is one version, or one person's version of science. The beauty of science is that you're allowed, what used to happen was someone would publish something in the New England Journal of Medicine, and then 50 doctors would write, this guy is an idiot, he doesn't know what he's talking about, in response to that. What happened in this situation here is that was shut down. That mechanism of peer review did not occur to the degree it should have occurred, because people attacked everybody that tried to peer review. That was the problem. It wasn't the science. If we follow the science and allow science to peer review, I think it works out, works out great if we allow unfettered peer review of people. Because people are allowed to publish, you know, their study, their analysis, their opinion, and then they should be allowed to be scrutinized by people. I mean, I've been in rooms where I've had one of my guys, one of my engineers come up with a theory, and then eight guys in that room would rip him to pieces. And that would tell me that maybe he wasn't on the right target, right? So there is a valid purpose for evaluating science, right? What we saw with COVID was whether you want to come to the conclusion that it was driven by the federal government or, or the pharmaceutical industry, or whoever, there was a desire not to allow that process to occur. And we saw that in congressional hearings too.
So for the purpose of Mr. Sigaloff, who I'm sure is a busy guy?
Oh, yeah. Let's let him go. We could, we could die. I didn't mean to intrude on it. But I mean, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, contact tracing does have a benefit. I mean, so if you want to modify that policy, so in such a way we limit intrusions on personal information or privacy, that's fine. It's just that I don't think that there's anything?
Bill breaks.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. All right. So let's, let's go to Dr., Mr. Sigaloff, welcome. Can you hear us?
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There you go.
All right.
Forgot to unmute it. Thank you for having me on. I appreciate you wanting to hear my opinions. I'm Dr. Sigaloff. Background on myself, I went to med school at Ohio University. It's an osteopathic school. Did my residency at Fort Benning, Georgia. Served in the military for approximately 11 years. And then I am now working at Carnet Clinic in Saravista. So when I was in the military, they were pushing very hard for the COVID vaccines, and my biggest concern was the components inside of the, in particular, the Pfizer. But this goes for all of the COVID vaccines are not approved for human use. In particular, it is the chemical ALC 0315, ALC 0159, and DSPC. The DSPC was specifically patented to go through the blood brain barrier. I believe at the time we were told that it would stay in our arm, but that was obviously a lie, because you can't put a product in there that was specifically designed to go through the blood brain barrier, which would introduce whatever chemicals or substances into the brain. You wouldn't put that in there unless you meant to do that. A lot of these safety data sheets from these manufacturers state that they are for research use only, not for veterinary use, and not for human use. And however this happened, it was still allegedly approved by the FDA to be given to people. And the other concern I have about every vaccine, and I encourage everyone here to go to the CDC website, pull up the package insert of whatever vaccine you prefer, doesn't matter. I'm going to read the MMR2 vaccine, and you go to section 13.1, and it says non-clinical toxicology. And 13.1 says carcinogenesis, mutagenesis, and impaired fertility. The MMR2 vaccine has not been evaluated for carcinogenic, mutagenic, or potential, or impairment of fertility. Every single vaccine that the CDC website has says a statement that is similar. It will say that it was studied in such and such animal, rabbits, cats, whatever animal, or that it was not studied in humans. And what that means is, at the end of the day, none of them have been studied in humans.
Or that's a generic legal term based on what happened with the flutamide back in the 70s, or whatever, 60s or 70s, right? Where they now put that generic, not evaluated for pregnancy, not evaluated for fertility. That seems to be a common theme with the drug companies on all of their pharmaceuticals, because they don't specifically test and evaluate that. So that's a more of a legal protection that they stick on there. I get it. I get what he's saying.
But if we haven't done the research, then it doesn't matter if it's a legal issue or not. It matters that we have not studied it.
Right, right. They don't study.
So profound that we don't even know, because most of the society is bathed in these chemicals.
But Dr. Sigaloff, could you address the issue of emergency authority and/or military orders to get vaccinated if you so choose? Whatever you want to talk about. I'm just trying to get you a place to jump on.
The emergency use authorization, I firmly believe that the county should not ever offer anything under emergency use authorization. The idea behind emergency use authorization is a legal term, and it is specifically a countermeasure for a biologic, nuclear, radiologic attack. And if you do your research into how they declare emergency use, it, there has to be a chemical, biologic, or nuclear agent used against US citizens on US soil, on foreign soil, or against the military. And once they, they determine that there is a chemical, biologic, or nuclear agent used against US citizens or the military, then they can grant emergency use authorization to specific products, whether that be a shot, a mask, or a test.
Okay. How about military orders to get vaccinated? Care to speak to that?
Again, going back to the emergency use authorization for the military, it was illegal for them to offer, to, to in any form or fashion, make it sound like it was even slightly required, because it is voluntary use only. But what's, I think, the most important for the county is I believe the county should not be engaged in countermeasures to protect, that may be available to protect against those particular issues. I think the bigger issues were at war with somebody, and we need to figure that out. And the county doesn't have a lot of interest in fighting that war.
And we have no authority on that. Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Sigaloff. Would you like to speak to religious exemption and religious rights as it may relate to vaccinations?
Yeah, I think the idea behind religious exemptions is that, I know plenty of people that never applied for them, because they don't have a specific religious persuasion. They're, they may be Christian, or they may be, I haven't personally run across any Muslims or otherwise, but they, or they may even be atheists, but it is a deeply held belief that they don't want to get whatever chemicals or products put into their body, and they want to retain autonomy. And I think the important issue with that is, it's also called a religious or deeply held belief accommodation. And I think that nomenclature is very important. The idea that these are voluntary, and even Mr. Crosby's idea that, you know, these contact tracing, I think the most important thing is that it's reiterated often that this, this phone call could end at any time if the person who was contacted wishes to end that call, rather than these strong persuasion techniques. Because, you know, if you remember back from the Milner experiment, Milner did this experiment where he had people in white coats tell the subjects to electrocute someone that they could not see. They electrocuted them to a point where they believed they may have killed someone, all because someone with a position of authority told them to do so. And so I think it's important that people who are contacted with contact tracing are repeatedly told that they can end this call at any time.
Okay. I think that concludes the amount of questions that I would like to ask, or any of my colleagues. Want to have more questions?
Well, like, so Doc, for example, emergency authority, let's just say, an adversary of the United States released smallpox in the certain communities, and then the government grants, or creates an emergency and tells everybody to go and get smallpox vaccination. Is that what you were talking about when you said you wanted to prohibit, or not prohibit, or be cautious of emergency authority? Because that's, so under a lot of the Civil Defense Acts for the United States, there's a lot of authorities granted for such chemical and biological attacks in the United States, for the government to say, hey, we just had a, you know, a smallpox or an anthrax attack, or something like that, and everybody go and get vaccinated. That's, that's?
Anthrax is a very poor example, because there are antibiotics that, that cover that, and the antibiotics would not be under emergency use authorization, because it's well-known which ones work for what bacteria. And I have no problem with providing things that have already been in existence, but granting emergency use authorization is saying that, that we're going to allow something to be used off-label, and it is a countermeasure for a biologic attack.
Well, like me, I got anthrax shots. When I went to Desert Storm, of course, the concern was Iraqis were going to use anthrax as a biological agent. And I think I got three of them. I think they were a successive shot. Granted, I know it's, it's, it's a very aggressive bacteria, but the vaccine was created to reduce the ability to transfer. And from what I understand, it had been used in veterinary use for sheep skinners and other folks like that. So that's not really off-label, I would, I would say, is it? Would you consider that off-label?
If you notice the book that I'm opening up, I don't know if you can see what I'm showing here, but this is from Colonel Tom Remfer, retired colonel. He actually sued the Secretary of Defense at the time, Donald Rumsfeld. And Donald Rumsfeld lost that suit because of the emergency use authorization that was given to anthrax, because of how many people in the military it terribly damaged.
I'm sorry, what? How many people? What?
How many people it terribly damaged and harmed, and they had to be removed from the military because of the damage they received from the anthrax vaccine. He actually lives in this county.
Okay. Okay.
And, and Tom Remfer won that lawsuit against the Secretary of Defense, saying that that was a dangerous vaccine, and it should not be used.
Oh, I got it. I'm fine. I mean, I've been rabies vaccinated. I've been, I mean, I was in special forces, so I went to a lot of the, as Donald Trump would call them, S-holes of the world. And, and I've been exposed to all sorts of stuff. I mean, you know, typhoid, I was constantly getting vaccinated for, yellow fever, of course, because I was going to all those countries that had high incidence. In the regular army, I think you got a yellow fever vaccine once every 10 years. I think I was getting yellow fever once every three years, or once every four years, and vice versa. So I was getting vaccinated quite a bit, and I never got sick. And so, and I was around people that had typhoid. I mean, large populations in Nigeria, when I was in Nigeria, half the people in Burnin' Kevi at the time were suffering from a huge typhoid outbreak, and I walked all through there, and I never got typhoid. You know, so I mean, it must have worked, as far as I'm concerned, because I was in and around him. I was eating and unfortunately drinking in that general area, and it seemed to work well. So there's a benefit to some vaccines, I would argue.
I agree.
I mean, but I mean, where do you draw the wine is the question.
That is the question.
The biggest issue is, the term vaccine has changed over the past five years. It's, it's changed to include genetic therapy. Genetic, genetic therapy is anything that can be injected into a human body that can change the function of the cell. So that includes DNA and RNA. And this idea that it's messenger RNA is incorrect. If you look at the actual literature from Pfizer and from Moderna, if you look at where it says mRNA, there's always an asterisk. You look down at the bottom of page, and the asterisk says that it's modified RNA. And what that means is they actually changed one of the ribonucleic acids inside of the RNA to one that does not exist in the human body. And the human body does not have the enzymes to break it down. And this is the problem with allowing emergency use authorized vaccine, alleged vaccines, is because we don't have enough information to know what this technology will do inside of humans.
All right. So we're talking about, so like some of the older vaccines, like typhoid again, let's, let's say, right? So for, for typhoid, that was a live virus, from what I understand, that was deactivated, live virus?
It was a bacteria.
It was what?
Typhoid is a bacteria.
It's a bacteria. So how did the vaccine work?
You take a pill, and it exposes your gut to it, then your butt makes, your gut makes antibiotics, or antibodies to it, I'm sorry.
Well, I got a couple comments.
Sure.
One would be, did the founding fathers know what an epidemic was? Answer is rhetorical. Yeah, they knew what epidemic was.
Sure.
Black, black. Okay. Is there a pandemic clause in the Constitution? No, there's not. And so that's why, that's why the issues come up that I just say that they're bill of rights issues. So I'm not saying that there's no benefit to any vaccine, although I did, used to say that the county should get out of the vaccine business, because all vaccines can be obtained on the free market. But?
Are you talking about going to a doctor?
Right. Okay. Right. Well, you know what? You could go to the pharmacy, Walgreens, and get, I don't know, flu vaccines, and I don't know if that's a doctor or not. So that, that's, I think that we agree that we need to look at this more.
Yes, a question. So in areas that are poor, if they don't have the ability to go to Walgreens, we do certain vaccines, like again, the polio, right? That would be one.
Yes.
Smallpox. Those are proven to have worked. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. I never got the COVID shot. I went to the fifth largest trauma hospital of surgery, where they all, the doctors there was open. I never got it. They almost fired me because I wouldn't take it, but somehow they let me slide, so I didn't have to take it. But I've always had an issue with the MMR, the measles, mumps, and Ebola, because at the time, that all this, the doctors and the pharmaceutical companies won't say it's true. But all the incidents where kids were getting autism at two years old during a certain, you know, having a fever, going to the doctor, getting the vaccine. And I know the Select Committee on Children and Families also came out, this was probably in the 80s or 90s, with the recommendation to not do all of them. So when I got my kids vaccinated, I did it for each separate one. Measles, and for mumps, and for Ebola. So that, combining those three, I've always wondered, there's got to be some kind of consequence. But the reason why they combine all three is because they think parents won't take the time to go and get each individual done. That's what the pediatricians told me in New York at the time. So, I mean, I, I think there, like you say, there's vaccinations that are really necessary, but then during COVID, when we had all the illegals coming across, I never saw anybody stopping them and giving them a shot for COVID or testing them. But we were mandated in Cochise County to be tested and to have a shot. So if there's really something that's pandemic, why wasn't that, is that something the county ever thought of doing?
So who in the county?
It wasn't, to clarify, it wasn't a mandate. The Health Department never forced anyone to get a shot.
The state did though, right? I mean, the state was forcing, as far as being in the hospital, they were forcing.
What, you're talking about in the hospital?
I'd like to make sure that Dr. Sigaloff knows that he's free to go if somebody hasn't.
Yeah, we don't want to kick the doc.
Or you could comment on what, what, for instance, Ms. Gomez says about multiple childhood vaccines.
I've blocked off the time till 2 o'clock. Thank you for being respectful of my time. I think the biggest thing that I can reiterate is, MMR2 vaccines have not been evaluated for carcinogenic or mutagenic potential, or impairment of fertility. And that is the biggest thing, is there has not been adequate studies of any of these vaccines. Now, I think if we're, they should be available to the public perhaps, but I think that should be stressed just as much as it's a benefit to you, because they're on equal footings. If we haven't done the research, then there's no way to know. And if we know that there's a benefit, well, okay, then there's been some research done. Then how come there's been no research on the carcinogenesis, the mutagenesis, or the impaired fertility? Then how come there's been no research on the carcinogenesis, the mutagenesis, or the impaired fertility? And so those need to be placed on equal warnings. You know, the risk and the benefit need to be explained clearly. And I think that's a, this is a business that the county should not get into.
So then you're saying that we shouldn't provide any vaccinations only upon request or not on a request?
I think they should be provided through the, to the civilian market rather than through the state or through the county.
But what about people who are in a situation they can't afford to go to Walgreens? Or they're on access which has very limited, uh, you know, vaccinations that they provide.
Yeah.
What, what, what is that? And what if it is a family that is prone to have certain illnesses?
Or immune com.
Yeah, or immune com. We have a high level of diabetes, right, in the Mexican community on the border. And some of these things are necessary for them. So how do we deal with that?
Uh, that's where the insurance companies come in because there's actually a federal mandate that they have to have insurance and it's provided through Medicare, Medicaid. And if this, the county doesn't need to get involved, that, that, that infrastructure is already in place.
It's, I have to look at, because I'm not so sure that that actually works, that, that there's a federal mandate and it's provided. I, I don't think that that filters down to those who don't have the ability.
I can tell there are a lot of people that do not have Medicare or Medicaid.
Yes, a lot.
A lot.
Especially in my community.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my point, what I've said before is you got to make sure that when we're doing them a favor, doing them a service, we're not messing them up instead. So that's, that's my fear and my concern. Maybe so they're an underserved community, there could be a whole bunch of reasons for that.
So I mean, I would think.
Oh yeah, let's serve them and then, then you end up making them sterilized.
You, you would have to categorize vaccines by what, what their, their mechanism of, uh, inducing immunity is, right? So is one genetic modification through the mRNA? Or is it just through creating an immune response by injecting the, the live virus like smallpox, for example, right? Or, or whatever vaccine.
And again, I think this comes back to, I don't think this is the business that the county should be getting into.
Just because.
There's a structure in place already with, um, the healthcare mandate that was passed, what in? And I was in med school when it was passed.
But I think, I don't think that that, I mean, I just don't think it goes all the way down to those need. I, I really don't. I mean, maybe you're in Ceravista?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you done much, much research or involved in Douglas community?
I don't know much about the Douglas community.
Yeah.
That's a problem. Okay. No, but I, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I think there's another side to it too.
Are these people in Douglas community US citizens?
Yes, but there, you know, of, uh, 70% are on access, just about. Isn't that about statistically? Over 90% is under some kind of access and that does not provide for the kind of vaccinations that especially babies need, you know, because there, there are some like smallpox we know works, uh, polio we know works.
How many smallpox vaccines are we giving?
I didn't.
None.
What, how many smallpox vaccinations are we giving?
None.
None right now because smallpox has been declared eradicated.
There's only two places smallpox exists in the world and it's the CDC and the Russian version of CDC.
There are some of the polio cases are coming back and measles is coming back. Whooping cough is coming back because we have let people in and have not been vaccinated.
The reason whooping cough is coming back is because the vaccine does not work. And the reason the vaccine doesn't work is because it doesn't get good immunity. When I was in residency at Fort Benning, I, in 2012, I got whooping cough and it was less than five years after my, uh, whooping cough shot. And then also another evidence that the T DAP does not work is every time a woman is pregnant, we give them the T DAP shot to help protect them against whooping cough. Even if they have two pregnancies in one calendar year, we will give them another shot because it doesn't work.
All right.
Okay.
I have a comment about underserved communities again, and this was from a grant reimbursement. And I won't get into, well, it said vulnerable populations in areas where vaccinations are not currently available. And county, the county shall provide SARS-CoV-ide vaccinations, not vaccines, to border populations, including the following priority populations, Hispanic, Latino, Spanish, that means people from Spain.
Understand that, but I mean, I still, it doesn't mean that it was done. I, I mean, there's also was, if I remember correctly, during COVID, everything was quick. I mean, I agree, this vaccination was done really quick from a company that was supposed to go bankrupt. And all the people ended up in jail from oxycodin to then now they've become, you know, one of the most they benefited from the COVID vaccination. So they're all now back up there with a lot of money and now seen as the great heroes of, of it where they were just the, you know, the criminals before. So there is a lot of misinformation.
Well, like, like who's really getting served, right? Uh, if I could continue, asylum seekers, cross border traffickers, migrant agricultural workers, bi-national workforce members. I mean, it says the county shall, you know.
And can I, can I interject here for a second? My, my concerns about the EUA vaccine, alleged vaccines is, so there was an article that came out, um, research paper that came out 26 September, 2025. And it says, one year risk of cancers associated with COVID-19 vaccination, the largest population-based cohort study in South Korea. And if you read it, it's, it's astonishing how much the alleged turbo cancer has skyrocketed in South Korea. And it's because the government provided, um, something that was unproven, untested and unknown. And now we do know that it contributes to cancer. And I don't think the county should be providing, um, cancer, potentially cancer causing, um, medications or treatments to especially the, the quote underserved. It seems like you're targeting the underserved rather than helping them.
And to be clear, the county no longer provides COVID vaccine. It's all through the private sector.
Thank you.
Right.
And the problem I have with this is the original, um, mandate, there was different tiers of people they were provided to. And they were providing it to the sickest of the sick people and to the minorities, which seems to me like they were targeting minorities. And I'm saying this as someone who is Hispanic.
That's what I'm saying too.
Yeah. I get what you're saying.
All right.
Yeah.
So who's going to, uh, work on developing vaccination policy?
I did it.
Oh, she already did it. Oh, you already did.
Yeah. Can we put it on the screen? Laura, if I email it to you, can you put it on the screen? It has not been reviewed fully yet or, or by our legal counsel, so it's strictly a draft.
Understood.
And one more thing I'd like to throw in there before we get this pulled up completely is the county's website says better living through vaccinations. There's no proof of that. In fact, the polio, if you look back and actually look at the, that the polio virus was in, was waning before the vaccine came out. If you look back at the Spanish flu of 1918, the only people who ever received, who, who became sick with the Spanish flu were those who received the vaccine. And they could not give it to the people who did not receive the vaccine. They, they did experiments where they had prisoners and they had sick army guys. Uh, they'd swab the army guys, they'd swab, then they'd use that same swab and rub it inside the mouth of a prisoner. Allow them to get, get out of.
How do you reconcile that against the, the countries that had polio vaccine implementation? Don't have polio now and the countries that did not all have polio. I mean, I was just, you know, in a, in a, in a country not long ago, it was Nigeria. And then I was in, uh, where was this at? What was the other one at? I think it was Tanzania. Where I saw kids all over the place with polio on little skateboards with irons, you know, because that's all they had to get around because their legs were gone. You know, so polio was rampant in Africa where the government has not implemented cross. And there's all the, the UN and US aid organizations in there providing polio vaccines now because, you know, they were one of the few countries that were left out of the polio vaccination program and they still have rampant polio in those countries.
And the oral polio was given to many of these countries and it was actually removed because it was actually causing polio illness because the or- oral polio is very dangerous. And I learned that through my C Bernie training, my chemical, biologic, nuclear training through the military.
Oh man, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm buying, not buying that.
Well, it's okay. We don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I've seen, I've seen where it does, to me, it works.
Wait, and that's where we can't go by the, it seems to me, and I'm not suggesting that you.
No, I'm not. Well, you're, you're making suggestions too, Doc, with all due respect. I mean, you know, you're, you're.
Research and if there is no research, then we should not provide something that is potentially dangerous.
All right.
All right. So here we go.
This is solely a draft.
It's kind of a lovely, right? So to speak. Can we put this up on a big screen? So Dr. Sigaloff to take a look at it. Is that possible? Guess we'll work on it.
Oh, um.
We, we were asked to do that because it happened.
Okay.
That's, that's okay. I'll get it to you.
My biggest concern is protecting the population and providing something that does not have adequate studies is not protecting, it's potentially harming. And we've learned in South Korea that it did terribly harm the entire population.
Let me ask you, is there any studies that you believe are true to show that some vaccinations, vaccinations work?
I, I refer you both to the CDC website where they say they have not adequately studied them.
So none of them have been adequately, adequately studied is what you're saying? None of them?
It's exactly what I'm saying. And that's per the CDC website, per the package inserts for every single vaccine that's available.
I would just say, I haven't looked at this before, but this gentleman, and I appreciate that he's speaking here. He's not a county employee, he's not been vetted as a county expert if you're asking him to review this contract. So I think it's a little.
Review a contract?
No, no.
Sorry, the policy.
Yeah, we, as I said, this is.
Well, if, if, when it's done, certainly it will be available.
It'll be put out to the public for review.
Yeah, it's not ready.
I understand.
And I think this, we didn't, I think the board could have time to review this. You don't have to discuss it here today. Um, we just wanted you to know that we are working on this, given past conversations. But feel free to take time to review it and give us your feedback at another time.
Okay, I can give you some feedback now where it says informed consent. And that was an issue that we talked about, you know, back when we were doing all the COVID meetings. And my opinion was that people are not getting informed consent. And they're lining up, I need this now. And they weren't, they weren't getting it as far as risks and so on. And it was experimental and, and passed all these tests and so. So.
Yeah, this is a meeting issue. I don't think it's something we're going to solve in this one hour workshop.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, we got mats in this room. Wondering why I'm waving.
As long as it's not mosquitoes.
There's just some bump line.
Who's the board of health again?
Board of health is Kathleen, myself, and then Citizen, Federal Party, could be on the board. One is.
Pretty interesting.
Yeah, some of them are community members, other, each district is represented.
Yeah. It's a draft. Everybody inputs on it.
It is a draft.
Well, I, unless there's further comments, input, did you have further comment?
No, I mean, I, I, I just, you know. Do you believe, do you think the tuberculosis vaccination works though? I guess you wouldn't believe that one either, right?
No, that's a bacteria too.
Yeah, but I mean.
You're talking with Dr. Sigaloff?
Yeah.
I agree.
Looking at the little screen down here and looking at the big screen over there.
No, it's just interesting because my son was going to be a doctor and he was working at St. Mary's because I thought that'd be great for him. And he contracted tuberculosis through an illegal who wasn't processed correctly. And it affected him, two nurses, a doctor who now forever compromised with it. And it was a pretty hard thing for him to go through, you know, to, to deal with trying to get it. When they call it, when it's just dormant, yeah. You don't believe in, in that, any of those vaccinations then?
Well, the, the tuberculosis vaccine, I don't believe is on the CDC website, but I would imagine that it also has not been adequately studied. And that's not something that we typically.
What is, what is an average study? Is it like five years of comprehensive human testing? Or is it like 10 years of animal and human testing? What do, what do you define as a comprehensive study?
Well, if you're going to say that it's not going to impair fertility, then you would have to study someone that received it as a child and then went on to have no impaired fertility.
You're going to have to do some kind of a limited human trial, right? Is that what you're talking about? On women, right?
Or on children.
On children, yeah.
Which would be difficult through the IRB.
And none of that.
There's a reason they don't do that, I can tell you right now, because if you walk up to a mother and say, hey, I'd like to test this vaccine on your kids, they will say no, right? So that's why.
The problem is that we've essentially done that, but did not tell them we were testing them.
Because that's like the MMR and, and.
We've done that, but without provided any testing. And there's no endpoint to find out if it actually impaired fertility, mutated their genes or caused cancer. So we're doing it without the studies.
And, and you're not experimenting very accurately because you're purposely trying not to experiment accurately in, in some cases.
But back to your Nuremberg argument, right? Do experiments. Well, we've done, US government has done experiments on humans for decades and decades and decades. Only on our. Well, I mean, look at all the, all the atomic veterans, right? Sit there, the video with them with their glasses on, blowing nuclear weapons off in front of them. Just like smiling as the blast wave goes by.
I have a patient.
What's that?
I have a patient.
You have, you have one of those, you have a patient from that? Oh wow.
He's in his eighties.
Leukemia or something, I'm sure, and cancers and all sorts of stuff. But, and me, I did, I climbed all over depleted Iranian tanks and all sorts of stuff, so.
Person tubes.
Yeah, I, I did, I was in a nuke field for a while. I actually did it. I spent a night in the hospital from being exposed to radioactive material.
We may never know what's going to happen.
Yeah, I've, I've been exposed to all sorts of crap. And that's what, I don't, I, when people argue about it, oh, this is going to give me cancer. I'm like, okay, yeah. You know, that's nothing compared to what I've been exposed to. I've been exposed to a lot of stuff. I did 20 years in the army though, and I've been all over the planet and burn pits and nuclear material and lead. Oh, God knows how much lead I've been exposed to, you know, how much ammo and shooting houses. When we're, we're shooting in shooting houses and all that bullets are hitting stuff and being vaporized and you're breathing in the dust. I mean, God, I mean.
Let me ask you a question.
The house is full of hazardous materials, you know.
Wouldn't you believe in, in a person's ability to understand their immune system and have an idea like to be able to, to say to the medical field, like, you know, I don't want this because I believe my immune system is doing well and, and I stand by that.
I'm sorry.
You're so immune, your immune system, do you believe that a person, an individual can understand what their immune system is and be capable of? Capable of?
Yeah. I think the legal definition is eighteen when they're able to make decisions for themselves.
Yeah.
But I also think it's inappropriate to give children, uh, under the age of three vaccines when their immune system isn't even online completely yet.
No, I mean, there's some credibility in that too.
All right.
All right. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Doctor.
All right, with that, um, any last discussion?
Thank you for everybody that showed.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta do next meeting, next meeting, next meeting.
Forward, I went to work with the CDC. And they.
No, we're not doing anything until October 2nd. So that's Thursday.
Thursday.
Today's the 30th. I forgot. Today's the last day of September. Tomorrow's October. Already. Ooh. Holy, holy. The moly. So, uh, the next meeting will be Thursday, October 2nd for a work session at 10 AM uh, to review agendas for the week of October 6th. And I, I, I'll wait till then. Okay, we got, I want to add stuff to the work session agendas. It's just, it's, it's too small. So Sharon just got back, Laura just got back. This should be raring to go, man. They're all refreshed, recharged batteries and, and ready to go, so. They're all refreshed, recharged batteries and, and ready to go, so. It's, uh, let's, but one, one of them is the, uh, public records request stuff.
You got it on the list? Yeah.
Yeah, that, that does not apply to the courts or lawsuits. That's a whole separate, I'm talking about the generic stuff that, we need to start putting more stuff on websites and posting stuff and publishing stuff so we don't have to do these public records requests. And that way there, you could just say it's online.
And there's nothing about it.
Because it, because we're getting buried in these things that should be just generally publicly available type stuff, you know?
We can do it on the county tourism board.
Oh, yeah, we need to talk about that too. I talked to Galen about that last weekend too. We need to deal with the deliberately scheduling things on top of other people's things.
Like the county and, and not embracing the county fairs, the county fair.
Yeah.
That had 33,000 people, the largest event the county ever has. And meanwhile, you've got services doing their own part of it.
Yeah, so we, we'll chat about that. So, all right, well, with that, uh, I guess we'll see everybody Thursday. We're adjourned.